I'd like to welcome everybody to our November Board Meeting. We have one guest tonight, Justin Smith from the K-88. Any other getting in my listening? I think everybody else is formally staffed and stuff. So, we start out with all our meetings with reading of the College Mission Statement, and I'll read that. Dot City Community College Mission Statement. Dot City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. As always, we'd like to welcome any remarks from the audience. If there is any, I'd ask you to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and present that to the Board at this time. Hearing none or seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. If anybody has our minutes for this meeting or the special board meeting October 15th or regular board meeting of October 16th, the special board meeting of the Joint City County USD 443 and the Junior College on October 22nd, and then special board meeting on October 29th.
Motion. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. tonight. Carla has a copy on all of our table. It's in the red, of course. Additions would be Action Item D, the Divorcement Agreement Renewal, addition for new business item A, Board Policy Number 205, Board Committee's First Reading, Executive Session B, discussing matters related to employer-employee negotiations, and revisions to the agenda, revisions to the consent agenda, excuse me, is personnel item number five, Assistant Men's Basketball Coach Resignation, personnel item number six, Interim Assistant Men's Basketball Coach Student Recruiter Employment Appointment, and personnel item number seven, Head Football Coach Resignation. And all the appropriate additions and consents to us all and as that are table or in hand. Is there any other additions, corrections, deletions, changes anybody'd like to make to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And we start off with our report to the Board of Trustees. As always, we get, first person needs to be Linda. She has to come up from the room from the Student Government Association. Linda, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening, everyone. This is everybody. Can I begin by starting with ETK, Sarah Tapper? They had a successful pumpkin patch fundraiser for the world of recruitment. They maybe raised a little three hundred dollars, and they thought it was really good. They also, we also have the international pumpkin, who are with Jen, pumpkiners, and it was a great company. We don't know how it comes about leadership and how to get students to be involved and how to make a better environment for us. They're also working on the Hyatt project, which incorporates culture and art and the community. They also have a scholarship workshop on Monday, and the fifth annual display, we have a quality of evidence to show them. The International Club have a Moby High fundraiser at the Little Theater, not probably 28. They will do another, Adopt a Hive, where they put up on another, they have, and they run it really well. They will be selling for alleys, but have a fundraiser if you're interested. And they're gonna also volunteer for gift marketing. We are club, I don't know if you saw posters, they got a van to take people to the voting polls, and I thought it was a great idea to make people get more, start, get people to start voting more. This is their nursing, they ended their food drive on November 1st. And the STEM program, if you could see, I place some 3D logos in front of you, those are from your skirts, from the STEM programs, yeah. Yeah, they're really awesome. They're starting to use the goal for 3D laser printer every Monday afternoon, from noon to five. They're setting up some STEM activities with the middle school and the after-school program for the end of the semester in X. They will be taking a research building slash design project at the end of the semester, and they're also trying to plan a trip to the South Mine and Collection point and find a STEM conference or competition, what in a little screen break. The B.C. 3 class authority have their successful ladies night. And the third union is having a game night for Christmas with the Christmas theme on November 30th, and it's open to all students, so I'm sorry if I'm busy. And Quiz Bowl meetings are very interesting, and their next competition will be December 1st at Calhoun College in R.C. And the F.G.A. is, you see, the Student Government. We have our Halloween of Trump poetry for Halloween, and we have about over a thousand foot, I mean, children come by, so that is awesome. And tomorrow we're going to have a hotline contest, where we took pictures of teachers and staff members, and craters are gonna pass by, and they're gonna guess who's wearing what. That is really what it's for. So.
I have a question.
Yes, yeah.
So, contact Tamalies gift drop.
That's right.
Okay. Who do we contact for Tamalies?
So that is the, yes, so that's the International Club, current president is Maria Nem Solid. You can also contact Mr. Australia, he's, he now looking for the staff, and he's the advisor of the college, and I'm pretty sure that, yeah, they get through that long period and doing the course.
Do you have his phone number?
I can have his phone number. Go ahead and call him, to make sure.
We don't have to call him right now. He should order.
His phone number is...
You don't give out a key.
No problem.
And that's for Tamalies and gift dropping.
That's right.
I did that before in there.
Okay, yeah, I'm pretty sure that any faculty that's during the COVID situation, and I mean, I think this is, yeah. Well, yeah, I hope you enjoy our experience for you guys, and I think that they're really beautiful people.
Tell her thank you.
Oh, I know for sure. Oh, yeah, very beautiful. That's very, yeah. You guys have a meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to our trustees' reports, although they will be shorter tonight just as our trustees' numbers are shorter tonight. So, unfortunately, our trustees are travel and ill and otherwise, we wish them all safe recovery and safe travel back. So, for the ones of us here, Laura Jean, would you like to start?
Well, I do have several things. The students always impressed me with their excitement and their thinking ahead, and we're so lucky to have that kind of students. I just wonder when I went back to study, I would say, thank you to all the students and the many, many things that they instituted that makes the campus sticky for them, and I really appreciate that. And on the food issue, I want to thank Chef John, he's not in here, but for his continued support of the campus, he has done an amazing job, and I appreciate that, too, so we can be sure that he and us will be there. We need to tell Christine that she is amazing with the success we had with Foundation Scholarship Auction. It was amazing, after two and a half years to pick up like that. And there were staff and students who worked all day to get ready for it, and that was horribly fun, and that was a meaningful statement from, it's just the campus, but there was a statement from the community, and I think that we have found a real response from our community, and so thank you to all those people.
You also worked in the...
Yeah. And it was fun, and I was tired that night. And yesterday, we had a net work. We talked about some things that we hadn't had a real opportunity to talk about with Dr. Ford on the financials, and I just found that it was very helpful in thinking about the future of the college, and I appreciated the time that we had to do that. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you for making my report also. And I wanted to say that two students had their recitals last Friday evening, and, man, I'll tell you, we have some talented people at this school. I'm very, very proud of them, just wonderful to be on the floor.
Well, since two of ours are gone, I'm gonna take their time, so I can be a little bit longer. First of all, I agree with our students, and I have never heard such excitement, just riding up in the elevator and talking and testing and somebody being, and you know, that is kudos, all of you, that they love their student life. So, I appreciate that. They had no idea who I was, got off the elevator, they're all still friends, and they were hugging, until I hugged Long and they come up to me. And I felt like a captain, and they hugged me, so that was good, and I thought that was good. Second, I went to the ACCT conference, and Terry was also there, attended this effective Board Governance and Ethics session. It was all day, phenomenal information. I brought it back, I sent it to our trustees. We had scenarios run by, like ethical situations, and things that I hadn't thought about, that I now have on the forefront of my mind, are what is ethical and what's not ethical, and what we as trustees can do, and what we as trustees, it's none of our business, and we need to learn to step back out of that picture and let the administration do their job. So, I learned a lot, and I also felt very, very strongly because for four or five days, I was amongst people from all over the United States, as well as other countries at this conference. And I will tell you, we are very lucky to have our president. The places I went, and when he walked through, everybody knew him. It was like being royalty. And he was introducing me to people, and they have such a high regard for him and hearing about our school and our growth and the changes that are going on. So, I felt very privileged that we're on that slide up, and I see us in the future presenting at these conferences on how you can turn things around and a community that wants to embrace us, and I saw that at this conference. The other part, I want to say, Bev Teymon, we need to hug her. They talked a lot about compliance and risk management and being on top, and schools that do not have a person with that capability are on the decline and are losing students. And I just wanted to say, we have that person, and we're good, and so thank you. It was nice to hear other people understanding how hard your job could be and not understanding the whole scope of it. So, I came back enlightened, excited, I think everybody, I'm like Maya, she went to the other one, I think that that was just an aha moment for me, and I appreciate going, and I have a deep regard and respect for our communities, and that's Buckland and Spearville and all of our little communities, what they're doing with their students, and how we're going to become an engaging college again for all.
I, just Kathy took my time, so. But I'd like to thank everybody, you know, I'd love to thank the staff and everybody for putting these together, they're really cool. I can't thank Christina enough for her work and all the diligent efforts and effort, such great things about the fundraiser, and she's here, she snuck in now, and if she'd like to say something, I'd be happy to come up and share a little bit about it. But I've heard phenomenal things from the community, and those are the attendance and the support and hours for the foundation and the college, which I think really speaks to the college as a whole and the community's value that they put in this college, that they were there, not just to monetarily support, but to give their support, just for presence. And so, I really appreciate that. I appreciate all my fellow trustees going and bringing back such great information. Kathy was sending stuff back so fast, I couldn't finish reading the things she sent before, before the next one was coming, and so, we, great information from the conferences that they're attending and bringing this information back for all of us, and making our college stronger and better in that regard. And I just thank you all for those efforts and that work as we go forward. My enforcement was not even after helping try to push it on everybody, I wasn't able to go to foundation, but a new, or the dinner, but a new conquistador was born that night, so. But, you want Chris to come up and speak a little bit? Yeah, would be nice.
Nothing else we need to add.
Yes, thank you very much. I don't want to take any of the credit for the auction, we had a lot of support between our foundation and our auction committee, and the people of the community, the people of this college. We had so many volunteers step out in the community over the last six months and begging from wine bottles and gift cards and donations, and you know, large and small. Dr. Nolte helped us get some of our bigger donations from out of state, which was fantastic, like he said, he knows everybody. So, it was, it was really kind of a, an eye-opening experience for me as well, we were basically flying blind. We had some notes from the auctions in the past, but we just kind of gleaned from, oh, those, that little bit of notes that we had from past auctions, and then we basically begged, borrowed, and steal, stole some ideas from other auctions that are in the area, and we just kind of combined all of those, and it really turned out to be a very successful event. We're still working on the numbers to make sure that all the expenses are paid, we've got some bills that haven't come in yet, but I'll do a full report at our December trustee meeting about not only the auction, but our full year as well. But for now, I'd really just like to thank everybody that helped, so many of you are here in this room that helped out with setup and getting donations and being on the auction committee and being on the foundation board and just making sure that this community really understands how important this auction really is to Dot City Community College. We're gonna, our goal, we didn't make our goal that we want to have in the next five, six, seven years, Dr. Nolte and Jared Bush and I talked, and we'd really like our auction to get up to where it's raising a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year. We're not there yet, but we did surpass our goal this year, which was double what they did in 2015, so we're very, very happy about that particular goal being met, and so now we've kind of raised the bar, so now we've got our work cut out for us for next year, but we've already started talking about what kind of changes we want to make for next year. But again, thank you very much, everybody, and...
Mr. Goffler texts us every day.
Yes, yes, yeah, he was texting us every day, until the day of the auction, even after the auction, and thank you to Andrea and her crew for getting out a story that went out today, and it went out campus-wide, and should be in print tomorrow, maybe next week.
Hopefully by the end of the week. I did request front page.
Yeah. Hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have it out in print as well. It did go campus-wide today, so I thank you very much for that. Does anybody have any questions, a little narrowly?
It was a large crowd, I'll tell you.
It was, it was a sold-out crowd. We actually oversold it, which was kind of crazy. One of the biggest things that is a new thing that we did and still is the Ford Academy of the Year, and the very first people that we did that for were Carl and Linda Bjork for their outstanding volunteerism, both for the college and the community over the last several decades, really, for Dot City Community College and Dot City Ford Camp. So, the award will be given to a person or persons every year, each year at the auction, and it'll be the Ford Academy of the Year Award, but it will be in the name of Carl and Linda Bjork, which Linda was crying on the scene, how we gave that to her, I noticed tears. So, they're very, very touched and still supportive of the college, I mean, they're, just because they got the award doesn't mean that they're stopping their support, so it's really awesome to see such great people in our community that come forward to things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other reports, again, I always appreciate everybody providing their written reports just before the meeting, and great information, but we do have one addition to our report, Dr. Cersei, to give us an update on the Higher Learning Commission. We just received some new information from the...
First of all, the good news, before we did the Higher Learning Commission, which still is good news, but we did get a renewal on our NC SER, which are related to teach to how the state students online, we got our renewal for that, which was kind of nice. The letter's actually dated the 23rd, but I think this one our renewal did, yes, they went and put it out, so. As far as HLC goes, we were renewed, and I have to at some point give you an official notification that we were renewed, but I have to have approval on the language. So, like I said it at the faculty and staff's day with the two letters which you have seen, and I literally had to get approval for all the language in the email and send that out. I didn't have time to give them the approval, so instead we just sent it in the raw, and you can look at that, because I don't see how they can get mad at passing on their words. We're not putting any words in their mouth for that, but the public disclosure says that we are accredited, but we're on notice, which means we've got a two-year period for which we've got to make up for some deficiencies that aren't quite the deficiencies yet. This is about the list we described. You're at risk if not meeting our standards. You still meet our standards, but we're concerned. They had four areas in their outline, they'll be in a public notice when we finally get permission to post it, once we get everything right, and then we post it, it'll be on our website. The actual public disclosure letter will end up on our website intact, so anyone can read, edit, parse, or however they want, but being on notice is actually better than being on probation, which happens to a lot of colleges, because that means it's not you're in danger or at risk if you haven't compliance, it's that you actually are out of compliance. So, we have four areas to work on, they're very much centered on Board, Board Responsibility and the budget, which is also part of Board Responsibility, so they kind of put a lot of work in your doorstep over the next two years. But it was interesting, when the original proposal from the team was, we'd have to put in interim reports, and the new letter doesn't say anything about that. So, basically, we're all in, and in February 2020, we will submit our proof that we are compliant, since we have fixed our issues, and then we'll have it in April, and then it'll be, then we'll sit on our hands, and we're waiting for the amendment, and it's about two years from now, we'll have a final ruling, and that will be how it goes, according to what they've said. You could change your mind easily, like pretty much carbon stone, once it goes through the, once it goes through the HLC board. I don't know if I want to say anything else, like I say, for the public, it'd be out when we finally get permission, and we were staying the right thing on the website. We actually have a hidden website we're setting up, and then we're gonna show it, but then they say, yes, we'll swap it into the accreditation page.
It's not like, I think that's a plus, if you don't, you said we don't have that check and balance spot.
We don't have anything in the middle.
That's different than what we thought.
They are basically putting us in, they're saying, I think they really put a vote of promise to say, yeah, we trust you to fix it, please go fix it, here's your eighteen months, basically. We'll have two audits, one now, and we'll see how, to show our balance and our budget and everything. We'll have, we'll get approval on our indices, on our, our, so the financial indicators. So, I think it's good. I think we did a very good job in Chicago, and we liked this, and I think that showed. I do know our liaison was happy with our meeting and interaction, and everything, so.
That was a fun three hours that we lived back.
Yeah. Well, it was kind of less fun in a strange way, it was like thirty minutes just sitting there, and then I feel like you warm up and you go, wow, it's not gonna get any worse, Lucy's trying to, let's try to enjoy some time.
They were very gracious, but they had a lot of questions.
They had a lot of questions.
But they had...
Yeah, it was good, though. They had a lot of answers, or we had a little honest discussion on what our issues were and what to do. So, actually, I mean, we were kind of, yeah, quite fun. I just, it's me and everybody else playing. We hadn't had a board chair to do it and to say, and a president to do it and to say, and so we're in the...
She was pretty good.
If we hadn't had us there, and people that really just looked like a team, acted like a team, spoke like a team, we wouldn't have won this.
We know what we got to do to fix it.
Yeah, and I think it's peculiar, you read, if you read the letter, they say why they think we're in danger, and they're pretty specific in one sentence, you don't have to parse it very much before you know exactly what it can be.
We have more to learn.
And if it's in with your report, very well.
Thank you, Dr. Cersei, I appreciate it. Moving on to our Board Action Items. Dr. Fordy, would you like to present the 2019 to 2020 Budget Calendar?
The proposed budget calendar is for you, and it mirrors the budget calendars that we had in the past. The next year's budget is rapidly approaching, it won't be long before we start to do it. Matter of fact, I don't think it ever stops for a CFO, we're already, I'm already making up some things in next year's budget, but we'll be working with budget heads in April, and then we'll have a workshop of the Board in June, kind of like we've done in the past, to meet the required deadlines to get the budget published in August as of April. Any questions?
I want to say I appreciate yesterday on our work session, you answered every one of our questions to where I was able to understand and follow the budget, so thank you for that.
And then you asked for some information, which you did send. Yesterday, there was, you said some traditional information also, right?
He was going to add on the column, and for our next one, for the next year, yeah.
They may have asked for information on the debt, which I've gotten it out.
Any other questions about the budget calendar, Dr. Ford?
I want to say again, that we appreciate the format and the summary that you've given, so thank you for that.
Thank you for spending, we spent a good hour, I guess, or more yesterday on that, and I appreciate you, your time for that. Entertain motion for approval of the budget calendar?
I know it's a little...
We'll wait for it. All in favor? Aye. Moving on, our planned service agreement with Johnson Controls. Dr. Fordy, would you like to lead that off, or would it like Ms. Reina give us a heads-up on that?
Well, if you can answer any technical questions you might have, I will kind of give a summary. The Johnson Controls contract is, I think, identical to last year. We, Russ, Ms. Reina, was able to, to equal cost as soon as it was last year. Johnson Controls provides a service for the college, they identify cost savings as far as energy savings, they look for ways to keep our repair costs down through maintenance and other things, they try to extend the life of the machines and equipment that we have, and they kind of promote environmental health and safety for the equipment and machinery that we have. So, there's a long list of the different chillers and the boilers and all the work that they do, the maintenance, changing the valves and checking the coolant and all the coils and everything, cleaning those, there's a lot of work involved, and so the college has used them in the past, and I guess has been very satisfied with the work that they've done. Again, Russ, you can add anything you want. so the college has used them in the past, and I guess has been very satisfied with the work that they've done. Again, Russ, you can add anything you want to add, any ask, answer any technical questions in my head.
Mr. Randy, maybe you can refresh my memory. How long we've been using Johnson Controls for this, sort of, has this been quite a few years at least, did I recall?
It's been quite a few years. I don't know the exact number. I just kind of stepped into it last year. It was one of the first things I had to bring to you guys last year, and I didn't have to put it. But, uh, that this year, they came to me with a 3% increase. I told them CPI was 2%, I would not take that to you. And I also told them that with our budget scenario that we were working with and having to cut our budgets, that I would really rather have it the same. And I pointed it out, one or two minor deficiencies on their part, and they agreed. So here we are with the same number we had last year.
Thank you for mentioning that.
I, I appreciate that, because we did have questions about maybe looking further and getting some bids. And for instance, the refrigerant is not included under this agreement. Why would you include that under this agreement?
The reason for that is because they're very proud of their refrigerant, and we can buy it a whole lot cheaper and furnish it for them if they're working on any of our equipment. And so it's another cost-saving measure for us, is that we, we handle the refrigerant part for them.
Thank you.
And I know we've been using them for, I think our initial approval, when they did the big upgrade and update to a lot of the systems, was like, at least three or four years.
Yeah, I think it was three years ago, maybe four, that we had the, the big change in it. But they've been part of our campus for very many years.
Any further questions?
I move to approve. Oh, I approve the Johnson Controls contract for the upcoming year. Last second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next, Mr. Ferguson, are you presenting for Dean Ossman's case?
Yes, he's, under the weather, he's right here.
A memorandum of understanding between Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Partners, Kansas Workforce One, open later.
This MOU is just a revision of all we have in place at the time. The corrections are going to be MOU dates. They got audited by the U.S. Department of Labor, so they just had to add things like dates, details and descriptions about the full programs and physical services. It's one, it's just basically from us, the LEO partners in our area, and Workforce One, it just basically says that we're going to serve our students and, and customers in the most cost-efficient way possible, and, and make sure not to duplicate services.
It's true, gentlemen, all those pages could say what needed to say.
Yeah. A lot of pages.
Lots of pages, lots of bringing.
Yeah. But in short, I tried to shorten her up.
Well, it's needed. And I appreciate that. It is a force for the workforce.
Yeah, they're really pushing our work, work skills and the efforts to find people living wage jobs at our center.
Thank you.
Motion by Christie Handen.
I'm second.
Oh, oh, I will ask the college attorney, any, any other concern, just let me, because I know there was a comment made contingent upon your approval.
Oh, and I did that this morning. That was before.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Can I ask a real quick question? Brady, get up here for a second. I want to, I want to ask you a question.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm so glad you're here. I was, I was emailed by Dr. Barnes this week, this weekend. And his question was, do we have classes, regular classes for, I know you're in an area that's, in a well-served area, and so is there opportunities to offer many classes in that building along with, or is it needs to be another place or something?
What kind of classes?
Regular classes, you know.
College classes?
College academic transfer.
Um, we, we, there are some times that it were great, but our busy times that we are about filled up is come from 10 to 12, and then 5 to 7 in the evening. The rest of the time, it would be wonderful to utilize, you know, whatever we have. The only thing that I would question is, because we're so grant-funded.
Right.
I don't know how we do that. I don't know if that'd be something to have to look into, but, um, you know, we would welcome it, because we are highly encouraged by Pay Board to be intermingled with the college as much, as much as possible. And so, you know, if there's something we could figure out, I am all for it.
I just think it's a great location, possibly, or, you know, you have a great area of serving this specific population.
Yes, and we have a computer lab. I mean, we've tried to update enough to have most amenities there, so that they would be available for anyone to use.
Well, compliments to you. I think people feel very comfortable in that building.
Yes.
And so it's an opportunity maybe to look at some classes possibly, like, you know, English, history, things like that.
Well, you know, with Pay Board, they're really pushing the workforce classes. And so if we could do something technical, whatever, we could, you know, with technical education and federal ed, that's really something that they push. Pay Board is really encouraging that.
Excellent. Sorry to call you out.
No, I, I'll talk about it any time. Just don't ask me anything I don't know.
Okay. I'll try not to. Thank you.
Vice President Tewin, parchment agreement renewal, would you like to present that?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are asking for a renewal to a three-year agreement. It's a service provider that electronically sends and receives transcripts for our registrar's office. We first entered into an agreement back in 2015. We are very pleased with the service and security that they provide. One of the things that we are doing is we're asking for your final approval to add three more years to the agreement contingent upon, tripled by the college attorney. That's because we, there's constant references in here to the original agreement. We had a little bit of trouble finding the original agreement from 2015. And then, much to our amazement, we found out it was because they changed the name of the company. So what we had is docified in the original agreement is now parchment, and so we were able to retrieve that today and get it at a late hour to Mr. Kirk. So when he approves it, we'll ask for your approval contingent upon his final approval. But we are very pleased with this company and would like to continue for three more years.
But actually, the process is identical to what we did before?
Yes, we would just continue exactly as has been. And they, they send and receive transcripts electronically on our, on our behalf. So, and it is required that we do that electronically by the Kansas Board of Regents.
To have all this new technology and programs that we've been putting in, how has that helped your office?
Oh, it will be tremendous. We will no longer have to hand count things or take raw data and process it together. So the new Gen Z bar, one system that we're going through the conversion, will change all of our lives for the better. We'll be moving into the year 2018. It will be much more effective. We'll be able to make decisions that are based on facts and numbers and documents and reports that we've had to kind of take a lot of time to put together previously. So we appreciate very much, I think I could speak on behalf of all of the staff, we appreciate that the board approved the expenditure, which it is a huge expenditure over the next few years. But Gen Z bar will, will be great because we'll be able to make decisions that are better. We'll be able to work more effectively and timely now.
And maybe it's just completeness, everything else.
Absolutely, yeah. Our iPads reports, CERS reports, things like that, KHS, we'll be able to integrate those into the software system, where right now, a lot of them are being kind of done and processed by hand. So we greatly appreciate your approval for that. And I think I could speak on behalf of everybody here in the sort of process. Yeah, they're ready with their hands.
So is the training for the new equipment in place? You've obviously had to make some change.
Yeah, I know the servers have arrived. Do we have someone here that can speak to that?
Do you want to speak to him later?
Yeah, there he is. I couldn't find him. Mike, please step up and start talking about this, because we just got, he just got a great report that we're on schedule and on time, which usually doesn't happen in these processes.
Well, we are on schedule and we are on budget, so that's good. We're still early in the phases of it, but it is split up into four different, what they call, training trips. First training trip is a live demo. Second training trip, we're actually into the software, we're configuring it for our use. Third one is day-to-day training, and the fourth is going to be all those one-off processes, the ones we run once a month or annually. Right now, we're starting, we're going to be starting training trip two at the end of this month. So this is going to require a lot of time from everybody here and their staff to go in and help us configure the system, but it's going really well. Everyone's really sad to get rid of their slide rules and advocates, but we'll, we'll have a much better system toward the end of this project, so.
Okay, I'm pleased.
Yeah.
You're lucky to take it.
Right.
Bring that up.
Yes, absolutely.
Good. Thank you.
I'm trying to find those.
Motion by trustee Grantson.
I second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business. Not that I'm saying he's unfinished business, but because I so rudely skipped over during our report, why Dr. Nolte here in unfinished business. He's still got business to do. So do you have your report, sir, because I skipped you over in our report, so I'm sorry. It wasn't, in my defense, it wasn't written here, and I'm a rule follower. If you put it in front of me, I read, so.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, because she's not going to know that I'm going to call her out, but I'm going to. Christie, would you tell us about the holiday Christmas party, as well as the Hall of Fame inductees?
Sure.
And I've got the cards in me, but she's, she's taking a lot of time to put this together. Thank you for doing that, because I was getting ready to shout this thing out.
Sure. Well, the holiday party is, they're actually going to be in the same day this year. So we'll have Hall of Fame breakfast in the morning, and then holiday party in the evening. And the holiday committee has worked really hard. We moved it to Saturday this year instead of Friday, so then more people could attend. And then also, we've made it a holiday sweater, or an ugly sweater party. That way it can kind of be a casual kind of event, everybody can go to, and everybody can afford to wear the attire, and hopefully we'll increase our attendance. There will be games at every table. It is a blue and silver theme, and we'll have a couple of different speakers and stuff. For the Hall of Fame in the morning, it's a breakfast from 9 to 11 here in the student union ballroom. I'm working on some kind of decorations and things, and Chris gave me some awesome ideas from the foundation options, so we're kind of working on that. The Hall of Fame inductees this year is Ron Prince has been nominated for his outstanding career achievement. For those of you that know him, probably, I think a lot of people do. He's kind of been all over the country coaching football mostly. He was actually at Kansas State at one time, right now, or venturing to the Detroit Lions. Right now, he's at the University of Michigan. So he and his family will be attending. And then for outstanding voluntary service, we have Greg Goff, which, as you all know, is very involved with our foundation specifically and a lot of other aspects on campus. He does a tremendous job of getting funds, participating in events. He's been involved for a very long time. So, and then third is the Lancaster. He has been nominated for his outstanding service to the City Community College. He was an agriculture faculty member for us for roughly 20 years, over, over 20 years, very long time. And so he is really excited, and so he and his family will be attending as well. So I encourage everyone to come. It'll be breakfast in the morning and dinner at night. You don't need to have one meal that day, so I encourage you all to come. Any questions?
And I think it will look, I think it will look well, because you know what she was doing before the, before the, before the, I guess, our foundation event? She was steaming?
I was steaming and ironing the tablecloths. It was a group effort there. Took a lot of elbow grease. It took a lot, took patience, but I think it was worth it.
It was very much worth it.
It was worth it, so yeah.
Thank you.
I wanted to comment, Christie, on the idea from the invitation for the faculty and staff Christmas party, a free babysitting, and I thought the invitation was particularly attractive.
Wonderful. I actually can't take credit for that. Frank Grant is our chair of the committee. I'm just the co-chair, but I won't take her funder. She's done a tremendous job. She did the, she did the invitations, and it was actually her idea last year to be the Y babysitting. It was such a great success, then she left, left kind of in charge to do it again. And right now, we have 13 kids signed up through RSVPs to be babysat, so hopefully more if anybody else needs it.
It's such a way that we're trying to be more family-friendly with staff and faculty and, you know.
Absolutely.
None of us have extra money, especially young families.
Yeah, and when I have heard that there's a wonderful holiday tree that you're, that's what your denomination is, and everybody did want to see any pictures there last year, so I encourage you guys to come and, your sweaters, and take fun photos outside during the party, and just have a good time. Anything else? You betcha.
That's really all I have, other than everybody's doing, everybody, it's, it's, Christmas is in there, although we got Thanksgiving back, sorry.
It's quickly getting passed over.
We're not missing.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Nolte, again, Matt Paul. New business item, work policy number 205, work committees, first reading.
Okay, thank you. This is information item only, because it is the first reading, and this is related to the board committees. The first attachment is the existing policy as is, and it states that there should be no standing committees and only special committees. You will recall at two of the last three board work sessions, I think we discussed extensively, that the change would be that we could allow standing committees and special committees. And so what this does is it designate the standing committees that you have already discussed, and then states that some provisions there, such as a board chairperson, will serve as an ex officio member. And we did research with other institutions, most of them always have a member of the board chairperson, and it serves as an ex officio. And then it also states that any action that would result out of these committees, standing committees, would be at a regular or special meeting by board action. So I think that kind of summarizes it all, and we will bring it back to you at the next regular board meeting or special board meeting. I don't think there are any scheduled at this time. So if you want to read over this and see if we captured what the discussion was or what the intention was, if you have some further questions or something else you want to add or revise, please let us know, and we can still do that before the next board meeting on the second, final reading.
Do you have any further questions, questions?
I just, Scott, this will help us with HLC. I mean, this is kind of what they're aiming at with our board oversight and being our own check and balance.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Would the aforementioned additions and corrections be settled? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
So, by, second by trustee Grantson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, approval, consent agenda as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Moving into executive session, we have two attorney firms. Would you like to give us? Attorney Curbs, would you like to give us the reading of the...
Mr. Chairman, I recommend board recess into executive session to discuss a grievance filed by a member of the Dotsey Community College Faculty Association. Should personnel matters not elected personnel except for the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543191, the open meeting to resume in this location at 7:25 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, the president, vice president, Florida, Charlie Figger, vice president, Fordy, Justin Wild, and Justin Smith should be included in the executive session. Is that... Is that a real for you? Is it him?
Do you see him?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And Sue Hammond.
Hearing the recommendation by Attorney Curbs.
Do you want me to give this stuff to you? Thank you.
Summoned by Justice Grant. All in favor? Aye. It will be an executive session until 7:25 PM. 7:25. We're calling the meeting back to order after the initial executive session. We do need to extend the executive session for an additional 20 minutes. Attorney Curbs, would you like to read that again?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I recommend board recess into executive session to discuss a grievance filed by a member of the Dotsey Community College Faculty Association. We're subject to personnel matters, not elected personnel, except for the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543191. The open meeting to resume in this location at 7:50 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, the president, vice president, Florida, Charlie Figger, vice president, Fordy, and Justin Wild, Justin Smith, and Sue Hammond should be included in the executive session.
Any motion? Second, Carter. You all in favor? Aye. Re-adjourn at 7:50. Call the meeting back to order after our last executive session. We will request a further extension of this executive session for an additional 10 minutes. Attorney Curbs?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend board recess into executive session to discuss a grievance filed by a member of the Dotsey Community College Faculty Association. Pursuant to personnel matters, not elected personnel, except for the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543191. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:02 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
Summoned by Justice Grant. Our section, we're requesting more collection. We'll recess until 8:02. Thank you. Five minutes. We're calling the meeting back to order, and no action will be taken after the executive session. We will move into a second executive session to start following a five-minute break. Mr. Curbs, would you like to present us the...
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session in five minutes to discuss negotiations with the Professional Relations Committee of the Dotsey Community College Faculty Association for the 2018-2019 school year, contract pursuant to the employer employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543193. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:20 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, vice president, Florida, vice president, Fordy, and Carl Pettey should be included in the executive session.
So moved.
And seconded. All in favor? Aye. We resume after a five-minute break. Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order from our last executive session. We will ask you to extend the executive session for another 15 minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations with the Professional Relations Committee of the Dotsey Community College Faculty Association for 2018 school year contract pursuant to the employer employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543193. The open meeting to resume at this location at 8:36 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, vice president, Florida, vice president, president, Fordy, and Carl Pettey should be included in the executive session.
Just moved. Seconded. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Called the meeting back to order. We do need to extend for an additional five minutes of our last executive session. Attorney Curbs?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations with the Professional Relations Committee of the Dotsey Community College Faculty Association for the 2018-2019 school year, pursuant to the employer employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543193. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:46, 8:47 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, vice president, Florida, vice president, Fordy, and Carl Pettey should be...
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right. The meeting is back in session after our last executive session. There is no action to be taken by the board. If there is no other things to be brought forth, the meeting is adjourned.